Hello, this is David Rovix with another livestreamed discussion with a person of interest. If everything is running smoothly, we are broadcasting right now on YouTube, Facebook, Periscope, Twitch, LinkedIn and VK. The show will be archived on all those platforms afterwards and soon after the broadcast is over, you'll be able to find it as an audio podcast if you search for This Week with David Rovix on any podcasting app or at davidrovix.com. Today, we spend the hour with Margot Black. We're talking to each other from our respective residences in this time of pandemic, but we are both here in the city of Portland, Oregon, where we have both lived for a long time. Margot and I have a lot else in common. We both have children and we both have spent years attempting to raise our children while in a state of constant housing insecurity, never knowing when the landlord will again raise the rent an unsustainable amount every year. To the extent that residents of Portland have more rights as renters than people do in the rest of the state of Oregon, with what few rights we have were won in struggle by Margot and others organizing under the banner of Portland Tenants United, a group which Margot formed along with other great folks. But while PTU's efforts have improved life for many people in Portland, the city, like so many others throughout the US, is a divided and stratified place and it continues to get more divided and more stratified every year. As a result of the constant rise in the cost of housing, the city of Portland lost more than half of its African-American population in between the last two censuses. You can be sure that if anyone were keeping track of statistics on how much of the working class in general we were losing, very much including Portland's much vaunted, rapidly shrinking community of artists and musicians, you can be sure the statistic would be similar. So with the support and encouragement of many people from around here, Margot Black is running for Portland City Council. The real estate developer, house flipping establishment, will be throwing everything they have at keeping Margot out of the city council and they will be trying hard to prevent Chloe Udaly from keeping her seat. But if Chloe can keep her seat and Margot wins this election, Portland stands to have a renter and pro-renter, pro-human, pro-working class, pro-so-called middle-class majority for the first time ever. Margot Black, welcome to my little livestream show.
Good morning, thank you.
Before we dive into politics and social change, I just would ask, how are you holding up? You're at home with kids who are not in school and are probably flipping out along with the rest of the kids in society. Tell me, how are you doing?
Yeah, so the kids, my kids split their time between their dad and myself. And both of us, you know, their dad is a professor, so he has to do a lot of online teaching right now and I'm campaigning, so I'm doing a lot of this and a lot of research and advocacy and, and they are, yeah, they're like, you know, when we use that cliche bouncing off the walls, that's like actually happening.
They really do bounce, right?
Yeah, and they, you know, like during summer break, which is what this is the closest, you know, they can see their friends, you know, we can do, we can go camping, we can go out into the world. You know, we do have a park where they can, you know, run off some steam nearby, but yeah, we, you know, we have a small place and I have a housemate and we feel definitely like we have to spend most of our time confined in these four walls and between the bouncing off them and my kids are 10 and 12, so they don't know like where trash bins are yet or like the, you know, they don't know where the sink is to do dishes. I guess that's like something you learn in high school or something.
Yeah, it seems, if then, yeah.
I actually have taught them these things, I'm just, you know,
Yeah.
Being a little honest about the tornado of garbage.
I know, they say that with parenting, the children sort of need to be a good model and then they imitate, but if you're a good model and you're cooking all the time, how does that work? You know, then when do they start cooking? You know, I never really figured that one out.
Yeah, there are definitely things I model much more than they emulate, but.
Yeah, exactly, right? Well, I, my first, the first subject I would like to explore here is also very personal, but also very, very much related to your campaign. My landlord is a corporation called The Randall Group, who owns a CTL management, the subcorporation that collects the rent here. They have more than doubled the rent since we moved in in 2007, they raise it every year, but somehow or other, I was still shocked when I received another rent increase for 2020 dated March 25th, weeks after the country shut down, the economy was crashing and everybody was losing their jobs. Just, I just want to hear what you have to say about that. This is The Randall Group, they own hundreds of properties up and down the West Coast, so what we can be sure of is that I was only one of thousands of people receiving such notifications.
Yeah, and actually, I think we've already talked about this, they were my former landlord Oh, yeah. In the last apartment complex I lived in. And so I was, I'm just, first, I'm just curious, are you month to month or is your lease coming up and they gave you a lease change, rent increase?
It's, I think it's technically called a month-to-month lease, but they still give you three months' notice before they increase the rent. So this was an increase for July.
They have to do that, I was just wondering if, because I want to know, I want to talk to my other Randall friends and find out if they all got rent increases, but what, one of the ways that they can make it a little bit less agitational in terms of an organizing thing is by, you know, if everyone's on a lease and they're just on, nobody's getting them all at the same time is what I'm trying to say. I was curious if you're month to month, they're all good, okay. Anyway, let's talk about the fact that on March 25th, you got a rent increase notice, which is, I mean, and you're not the only one, I've heard of a lot of other management companies doing that. I heard that Mainlander Property Management maybe sent out a rash of 9.9% rent increases, which is the cap now that we have statewide rent control, quote unquote.
Quote unquote, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, it's funny because you would, you know, in this moment right now, you would think if we didn't have rent control, would they be raising the rent by more than 9.9% or would they do a little bit more reflection and think, wow, this is probably the worst time ever to raise the rent, I should, you know, I shouldn't do it very much, but maybe they're doing 9.9 just because the state has basically said, that's a completely reasonable annual increase, 9.9%, right? And they're just like, what, we're just doing, we're just doing the thing the state told us to do. Anyway, yeah, the state absolutely could have, when they did their, so the Governor Brown did her first eviction moratorium on, I want to say March 22nd, and that was like garbage, all it did was kept the sheriff from coming, but your landlord could still put a 72-hour notice on your door, could still charge a late fee, could still file an eviction. So on April 1st, she put in a stronger executive order that basically made it so that nobody has to pay rent, and now it's still a cruise, it's still due, because they are, you know, our policymakers are living in a fantasy world where as soon as we start working again, you know, the money will just roll in, you know, like it was before.
Oh, yeah.
We'll be able to pay our regular two-high rent and we'll be able to pay our back rent that we couldn't pay and we'll be able to pay our increased rent.
Yeah, in a society where 40% of people are not able to come up with $400, according to some recent often quoted statistic, yeah.
It's, I mean, this has been something that's been printed, you know, every year for the last, you know, several years, it's that most Americans, if they have a financial emergency, that necessitates them to come up with, yeah, like $400, you know, is there somebody you could call if your life depended on it kind of thing? Most of them can't.
Yeah.
And meanwhile, yeah, we're like, yeah, the rent is still due, you're just going to have some time to pay it, that's not going to work. So she could have, you know, the state could have, absolutely could have said no rent increases, you know, until further notice or whatever. And there is a law, so there's a ban on local rent control in the state of Oregon, which is, I think, 35 or 37 states also have, which means like Portland isn't allowed to do its own rent control, but there is, in that statute, there's a section that says in a time of natural or man-made disaster, that local jurisdictions can enact rent control and it has to be lifted after, or can only be temporary, it has to go away when the emergency order goes away. And they did this, you know, I'd like to believe that in 90, whatever, when they, 92 or 3, was it 82 or 3? 82 or 3, when they put the ban in on rent control, that that little emergency clause was, you know, for times like this.
Right.
They, they were contemplating sort of like major economic shocks, but they, but the language says it has to result in a material elimination of the rental housing supply. So they're thinking bombs, fires, floods, and meanwhile, we're talking about this as like a, you know, a wartime situation, right?
Yeah, I think a pandemic counts as bombs, fire, flood, yeah.
I mean, I also think so, but that's literally the excuse that the mayor and our current city council are making, they're like, it's illegal, and I'm like, but you can shut down the economy, you know? You can, you can tell that we have to stay in our homes and not work, but you can't, you know, you can't enact emergency rent control and all we'd be asking for is that you say you can't increase the rent during the pandemic?
There's a fear, there's a fear among the political class, like people like Ted Wheeler, I think there's a, there's a fear, I mean, I think it seems like, first of all, what's happening with shutting down the economies of much of the world in order to save a certain percentage of people, to me, that I'm shocked that the capitalist class was even capable of doing.
Me too, oh, me too, yeah.
But then.
But the fact is, but then they did it, but then they're like, oh, but we can't, what we cannot do is say that the rent can't go up, like, that's out of our hands.
Right, right, okay, if they can shut down the economy, that's the next step, of course, part of this process is doing things like what you're talking about, like saying the rent can't go up or even that the rent has to go down, but then the idea that politicians actually have the power in a democracy to say that the rent has to stop going up or that the rent has to be cut in half, which they do have the power to do, this is a democracy. We do, there is, they do have the power to do that kind of thing on a federal level or on a state level, not, I don't know about municipal.
No, that's where, I mean, this is where my legal, you know, expertise is not complete, like, I mean, at the federal constitutional level, there's like illegal takings or something, right? And that's because we, because property rights are so sacrosanct here. And if, you know, you could sell something for $10, the government can't tell you that you can sell it for eight, I mean, I, this is something that I should learn more about. I don't know, but again, it's like, you know, all of those things, I just feel like everything is, you know.
It's all in the air, right? It's all on the table. And what we do know is that in other countries, in many European countries, right now, they have, they have stopped rent, stopped mortgages, it's all been, all the mortgages have been deferred and the rent has been suspended. And of course, we also know that in other countries, they are, you know, they have laws like you can't own more than one or two houses, you can't, you can't be a landlord in many countries, it's not even a possible thing to have a career as a landlord, this is just a, it's not, not a, not one of the options in terms of what you're making money off of people's need for housing, you know, there are different models of society, it can be done differently and this one can be done differently. Governments do have power and their power, whether it says so in the constitution or not, you know, in a democracy, we can amend the constitution, we can actually, the Congress can amend the constitution, so whatever it says in the constitution, this can be amended, we, you know, it is a potentially functional democracy, right? But, but it seems like.
Also just, I mean, here's one of my favorite pieces of this is, yes, we could amend the constitution, we could make declarations and, and, you know, we should, let's be clear about that. But, you know, the, like, during the last, you know, in the last big rent crisis, you know, where rents were going up, 200, 300, 400, $500, you know, 2015, 16, 17, 18, when we would complain about that, the, you know, landlords and the economists and the real estate, you know, the capitalists would come back and say, well, just whatever the market would bear, you know, if you don't like it, get a better job, move to a less expensive city, you know, save better, stop eating avocado toast. So that, you know, the premise there is that, you know, somebody else will rent that housing for way too much and so, you know, go off and find something that you can afford. So if, if our assumption is that the market is setting these rents, then 40% unemployment, you would think, would drive the rents down, right? I mean, the fact is, is like, we can't pay those rents anymore, that's exactly why we're not paying them. And so now, invisible hand, what say you? Isn't this when the rents are supposed to come down? And then my favorite part is now the landlords will be like, but our bills, you know, or our mortgage.
They actually wrote me a letter saying, when I, when I wrote them an open letter to my landlord, which I, which I also put out on Counterpunch and other places, but, but they, I'm sure they didn't actually read the letter, you know, whoever, whoever they are, you know, but some bureaucrat at CTL Management did respond to the letter by sending information to me and presumably other people about how we can apply for unemployment benefits. And, and I just wonder, and I really wanted to write them back and say, well, yeah, this $2 trillion corporate bailout that's coming in is mostly going to corporations like you guys, Randall Group, and so why don't you tell, why don't you get some government money and stop asking me to pay the rent that I can't afford, that nobody can afford these days? Yeah, it's.
And these unemployment benefits, I mean, I know people who were furloughed or laid off in the very first days, they're still not getting their unemployment, you know, payments. And then you have all the, I mean, and I know that unemployment has been expanded to meet more job sectors, which is good, but there are still tons of, you know, holes that people fall through. And, and then folks, anybody working under the table or like long-term unemployed who had like different, you know, different little hustles that got, you know, kicked off unemployment a while ago, you know, they can't get back on, but all that, you know, all those hustles have evaporated as well. And, and then most importantly, you know, undocumented folks.
Yeah, 11 million undocumented people who have no option of getting on unemployment.
Yeah, and these are people who, they, they're getting sick, you know, they, they own businesses that provide incredibly, you know, incredible value to our communities, like food carts, housekeeping, they help, you know, they produce and bring to market a huge amount of our food and, and we're just like, yeah, sorry, like you get no small business protections, you get no unemployment and, and no stimulus check. And, and, you know, I'm sure that among the undocumented population, a huge proportion are renters.
Yeah.
And their income is just, just zero, yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure, almost all. And their income is zeroed out and, and they have larger families, some of them, and I mean, I think this is, and this is a humanitarian crisis that we're going to see the chickens coming home to roost real soon, you know, if we don't address this. And so for landlords, I mean, to your said, apply for unemployment, I'm seeing other landlords write letters saying Safeway and Albertsons and Amazon are hiring, put it on a credit card.
Yeah, that's what they said to me, put it on a credit card. Do they not understand how bad the economy was doing for so many people before? Like, I mean, and do they, you know, like, what I wonder about is, I mean, the nature of the sort of, the way that these, these corporations like CTL Management, The Randall Group, Prime, how they actually operate, like how it is that you could actually do a rent increase, like, like, I mean, is there anyone actually thinking? Is there anyone in the process? You know, because at some point, you'd think some corporate executive would be like, oh, wait a sec, if I do this and other people do this, we might actually foment a revolution in this country.
I mean, this is what I'm wondering, right? I'm like, wow, you guys are really like, leave the room.
I mean, read the graffiti, walk around the city, it says rent strike everywhere.
I know, and I mean, national and international headlines are calling for a rent strike and they're like, time for the 10% rent increase. And I'm like, what's the cognitive dissonance there? I mean, I'm like, do you think we're lying? Do you think we're sitting on piles of money? Like, I think we're just like unwilling to give it to you. Like, I know people who are paying their rent before their food and they will continue to do that until they have no money, you know?
Right, and what do you have to say to people like that? Because that's a lot of people, Margot, there's a lot of people who are feeling, like, and I've been having so much contact with them because, you know, as you know, I write a lot of songs on this subject and I get a lot of comments on YouTube from, from people who are suffering all over this country and there are, but there are a lot of people who, I mean, they weren't looking for this kind of music, they came to it because of the circumstances, they find the songs, they find them to be, you know, reassuring that somebody else is thinking about their situation. But what I'm, what I realize is that there's just so many people out there who feel so guilty that they can't pay the rent and they, because they feel, I think they feel like there's something equitable about this system and they're not playing the game correctly. And what do you have to say to those people?
You know, I don't know that it's guilt, so what, so I've been organizing with tenants for the last five years and we've done a few rent strikes and we have, well, a couple rent strikes, and we've talked about many others. And, and one of the reasons that you don't see me right now shouting rent strike from the roof, first of all, I want to say, I am like, when PTU formed, it was all about leveraging our collective power to pay the rent to, you know, affect our material conditions. And my fantasy then and still now is a real citywide tenants' union with like real density, you know, thousands, if not tens of thousands of us, who all threw like an organized democratic process, you know, vote to strike and withhold our rent. And now, we've tried this, so I'm just trying to say, I'm like, I'll rent strike all day, every day, you know? But I have been a little bit more careful about that in this environment because, you know, first of all, there's a difference between I'm not paying my rent in order to meet, you know, to win my militant demands and I can't pay my rent because I lost my job. And I, and I'm just saying that the organizing conditions are a little different, right?
Yeah, it's more like a de facto, it's a de facto rent strike, as long as evictions are suspended, but at the end of 90 days, it's what I've been saying, and I don't know, it seems to me like three months' suspension on evictions, any, if you're not paying the rent, it's sort of like a practice rent strike, it's like a game almost, and at the end of the 90 days, then it's real, you know, but.
No, that's true.
People, I've been ending my broadcasts often by saying, don't pay the rent, because, well, people are living in places that don't have, that have a suspension on evictions, you know, there's no real danger in encouraging them not to pay the rent. At the end of June, then it's a whole different story, depending on what's happening by then.
But it's, it's fear, so, so even when, like, so the, one of the last buildings I was organizing with, in Oregon, if your landlord isn't fixing things fast enough or your place has become uninhabitable for various reasons and you've communicated with them and they're not, you, it is your, you have power, legal power to withhold your rent, you have to do it in a, you know, you have to check a couple boxes to inoculate yourself from eviction, but it's like the way you get your day in court, you withhold your rent, then your landlord sues you for eviction and then you go to court and you're like, well, I wasn't paying my rent because they weren't fixing the toilet. And the judge is like, okay, then you, even if the judge disagrees, even if the judge is like, well, you only gave them like two days to fix the toilet, you should give them a week, so you have to pay your landlord back that rent. I mean, that's just one of the possible outcomes, but you won't be evicted for it, right? That's kind of like the little, the game, you're allowed to withhold the rent to get your day in court and you'll be protected from eviction. Even in those cases, which is what the last building we had, every, I mean, we were demanding months of back rent and other things, but they, and they were still living in very uninhabitable conditions and I started saying like, we know, you guys, you can just stop paying and we can do this in an organized, you know, way. And, and even after like months of organizing there and lots of education and agitation and people with good politics, you know, I just remember the, the first woman who responded to this, you know, we were actually having an in-person meeting, because this was back in the old days when you could do that, you know, she was like, oh no, like I've got kids, I'm not taking that risk, like no way. And it's just, it's, it's such, you know, we have lived in this, if you don't pay the rent, you will be evicted and your life will be like effectively, you know, destroyed for years to come. We've been in this, you know, psychological relationship with our landlords for our whole lives.
Our whole life.
And even me, so I couldn't pay my rent this month, I haven't been, you know, go-to-work, get-paid, employed for a little while and, and I have had kind of little pockets of things that have been able to get me through, but I, when I decided to run this campaign, it was, I had a very small employer retirement fund from my last job that could basically get me through the end of my campaign before I'd have to, you know, hopefully I would get this job and if I don't, then I'm screwed. But, you know, the stock market went nuts and so I lost basically like two months of bills, which is a big deal because I only have a small amount. And so I talked to my landlord and, and she and I have, as you might imagine, a little bit of an antagonistic relationship. You know, I don't like that because I, you know, it's stressful, right?
Yeah.
And I basically just told her that I wasn't going to pay, even though I could, in the sense that, remember, I'm not, you know, I'm just dipping into a retirement account, right? And it's like the account is smaller, but there is still money in it. And so it's a really, for me, it's a difference of not paying now or not paying later, right? And so, and so I, first I just kind of tried to like, I really just was like, my house, the house I live in is paid off, so my rent, which is enormous, goes right in her pocket and, and I was basically trying to like reason with her and, and I first suggested, can I just pay 1,000? Cause I have a housemate and so we would, you know, that we could get away with that. And she said, no. And so I was like, all right, well, I'm just not going to pay then. And but then on the 4th, when like rent was due, I was really gripped with anxiety. And it wasn't like, is she going to evict me? Because, you know, I have, I know how to, you know, do play that game or whatever, but it was like the, you know, is, is the, is the government going to come through, you know, is this going to get waived? Like, am I going to be on the hook for, you know, $1,800 later when I'm going to be able to afford it even less?
Yeah.
And, you know, and it was just, it was just, it wasn't guilt, not, not a, not a hair of guilt, it was just anxiety when it actually came down to not paying of like, I, you know, like, am I, am I being really reckless right now? And this is going to like really screw up my life later?
Yeah, it's fear, because I mean, of course, the, in, as they often will talk about, like, not who's they, the capitalist class, the ruling class, the ideologues that write the textbooks, the, these people love to talk about contracts and about agreements between parties, right? And there's this, this assumption, as we know, anybody who's gone to high school in this country knows, there's this assumption in the, in this whole, all this talk about contracts that we, that it's nonsense, of course, in reality, because there is no equal parties in these contracts, right? And, and when we're talking about a contract between a landlord and a tenant, the landlord has the power to evict the tenant, so there's nothing equal about this contract. But, but there, at the same time, there is, there's such a relevant, it's such a relevant concept because in terms of agreements between parties, because when we're talking about the landlords, they are actually, at least certainly in the case of the big ones, and also the little ones can take advantage of the big ones' tendency to fix the prices in the first place. So the big ones, they fix, they fix the prices. And this is an agreement between landlords to keep the prices high and keep houses off the market so that, so they don't have to sell them too low because they want to make sure, you know, everything is as expensive as possible. But then people organizing a union, a tenants' union is basically considered to be a, an act of, of some kind of like, you know, I don't know, you know, these people must not believe in private property is the idea that you, that comes at us, right? It's like, we're just a bunch of like, I don't know, you know, it just insert expletive here, you know, some kind of.
And not just don't believe in it, but we also don't know how to take care of it, we don't know the value of it, you know, we are like lesser people.
As if there's no, yeah, exactly, as if there's no such thing as a well-run co-housing unit, which you can find all over this country, all over Europe, all over the world, you know, where they take care of their houses much better than, than some corporate landlord does.
Yeah, so, so it's the, it's, you know, to get back to the like rent strike, I mean, you kind of brought up like the militant tenants' union, I mean, right now, what I'm seeing is people who can't pay the rent, who have told their landlord they can't pay the rent and aren't, and don't pay the rent, and then maybe their landlord is saying like, okay, well, you know, it'll be due in six months, maybe their landlord is, is coming back with a, well, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna do whatever I can to get it anyway. I mean, we've had landlords who are still trying to charge late fees and trying to post 72-hour notices or something in between, right? But here's what those people are doing, they're moving out. I'm hearing stories about people who just, you know, have been moving out of their apartments in the night, where are they going? I don't know, are they going to family, are they going into their? Are they going into their cars? But the, you know, the problem is, is that they don't even, um, they're just assuming, well, if I can't pay the rent and I'm not going to be able to pay it in six months. And, and so I'm, you know, what I'm really struggling with right now, and I think, like, in so many ways, this whole global economy coming to a screeching halt is, um, kind of the tenant organizer's dream, right? Like, well, we can't pay the rent, so if there was ever a better time for a rent strike, it's now.
Well, the conditions, that, that's part of it, right? The conditions have to be there for, but people have to be desperate if they're going to be rent striking, that's clear.
Right, right.
But also there has to be a certain
We can't reach them, we can't knock doors, we can't reach, you know, and, and that's what it's so
Win too, even if, whether you can reach them or not. I mean, how, how do you convince people that victory is possible? How do, how do you convince people that this is not the way it has to be? There is nothing, God did not come down and say, there's landlords and tenants.
Right.
Landlords and tenants exist only in our minds and, and it's, it's something that is enforced by the police and by the law and by, you know, the courts and everything else. But this is all a figment of our imagination. There's nothing, there's no natural law that says somebody has to own land and somebody else has to rent it.
Right, I've been trying to talk about that on the campaign trail in terms of like the laws of physics, you know, in terms of the things that we, um, have control over and have no control over, you know, arbitrary or not arbitrary. And this whole relationship is arbitrary, this is socially defined.
Yeah, this is not
It is not gravity, it is not God.
Can we talk about your campaign, by the way? I think we need, can you tell, tell us why, why are you running for a city council? And, and what do you hope to accomplish if you get in? And, and did you think my introduction was sort of accurate in terms of like what, what could potentially happen? If Jane, Chloe and, and, and you are all on the city council at the same time?
Jane, who's Jane?
I mean, hard, hardest, hardest
Oh, hard, Joanne, Joanne, yes, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, uh, yeah, so I, so first of all, I think the, the potential composition of the council, um, could be pretty powerful. Cause it would, uh, if Chloe wins, um, Joanne's already there. Um, if I win and if, uh, Sarah Ionerone can get, um, Mayor Wheeler out, um, we'd have an all-woman council. Cause the only possible contenders for Fritz's seat, um, are two Latina women. And, uh, uh, and so we'd have an all-women council and we'd have a very kind of progressive radical council. Um, which would be amazing. Um, and I, it's hard to even wrap, like, I can't spend too much time thinking about that because it's like hard to wrap my mind around how amazing that would be.
That would be so amazing. And of course, the establishment is trying to stop it from happening, you know? And we don't know where Ted, Ted Wheeler's money is coming from either, right? That's, that's a big mystery.
Well, uh, 10,000 of it came from the Realtors like last week.
Is that, is he admitting to that?
Oh, it's reported. I mean, you have to report your campaign contributions, yeah. So it's reported, yeah, he's not running, you know, he's not using the public financing and, sorry, can you hear the bing bing on my
Yeah.
Computer?
It's not too
The notifications? Okay, I'm, I'll try to figure out how to turn them off though.
It's no big deal.
So I'm running, I mean, I'm running for a lot of these reasons we talked about. Um, when I went, so I'm running to fill a seat that was vacated by the untimely death of the, of Commissioner Fish. He died, um, I want to say December, very end of December or January 1st, um, of stomach cancer. And, um, and he, so, so Chloe Daly has been, um, a city commissioner that, that myself and Portland Tenants United, um, worked really hard to get into office in 2016. And that's how we've won some major gains and, and in renters' rights. And, and so she has, uh, you know, kind of an agenda that we're trying to see through. And my first thought after Nick died, not my first thought, I actually, anyway, I was very saddened by his death. Um, but an early thought was, oh my God, what does this mean for our like agenda? And I, I reached out to, um, somebody in her office, a friend of mine, and, and she was like, this changes everything, I have no idea. So then I kind of started worrying a little bit about who might fill that seat. And then I, it was, wasn't long, you know, didn't, wasn't a huge stretch before I was like, oh wait, I was going to run for this seat two years ago. I'm gonna have to do it now. But then, one of the first, um, phone calls I made to just kind of, uh, see what the temp would be. And it was, it's, you know, kind of from a political insider. And he said, well, uh, you know, I, I really like the idea of you running for office, but, um, but hasn't, you know, Chloe already done like everything tenants' rights? Like, um, haven't we like done housing, you know? And I was like, oh, that's why I need to run.
Yes. Oh my God.
Because, um, you know, because we think that and because like, because hu- housing and homelessness are still the number one issues for Portlanders. And, you know, the most immediate reception to me announcing that I was running was, we don't need another single issue candidate. And I'm like, hey, first of all, I'm not a single issue candidate. Um, you know, I am very loud about housing and tenants' rights because there was a, uh, vacuum of, you know, there wasn't any, there wasn't another voice, um, you know, but I've been fighting for economic and social justice my whole life. Um, and I have, you know, I'm not a one-trick pony, but also, um, housing and homelessness touches every issue we care about. Um, the impacts of housing insecurity, uh, you know, are myriad and go well beyond, you know, just not having a roof over your head.
Before this crisis, they called it the crisis.
Right.
On the West Coast, when, when people said the crisis, it, it was pretty clear. You know, maybe some people were talking about climate change or forest fires, but most people were talking about homelessness and housing.
Right, right. And, um, and so when people, you know, say we don't need a single issue candidate or we already have one tenants' rights person, um, that's when I'm like, this, you know, no, no renters are saying that, okay? No one who is homeless is saying that. Nobody who, um, you know, even low-income homeowners or, you know, I mean, anybody who has felt in any way the anxiety of, um, of, you know, not knowing if they're going to be able to pay their rent or, or if they're gonna still be in this neighborhood, you know, when their kids start school next year, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, none of them think that like housing and homelessness are fixed or that like housing and homelessness is like a single issue that we don't want a single issue candidate for, right? And this is a reflection of the fact that most of the people who hold power and control the like dominant messaging, you know, they haven't had to worry about, you know, paying the rent in, in decades. I mean, these are people who still, you know, have these like romantic stories about moving into their first apartment that was like $150 a month and working a minimum wage job, uh, and going to school and paying the rent and
I still get these, I get these lectures from, from people like my, my parents' generation, you know, including I'd have to say my mother. You know, like she tells me about the rent-controlled apartments she lived in in New York City and how she paid for it and all that. And like, I, I just, I just, you know, I listen to these stories because it's what can you do?
It was rent-controlled, you know?
Nothing to do with the current reality.
And that, you know, and it's just, it's this like avocado toast mentality that we're just, you know, like, we'd be able to afford it if we just paid, you know, we just spent less money on avocado toast. So, I mean, what I've really noticed in the last five years, and I mean, we know this, but this is just, you know, my own personal journey, is that the people in power are not the, you know, not the working class. Um, and, and it's been a, you know, very, very, very long time since, if, if, if ever, um, that they have had, uh, they've lived, you know, working-class lives or lived in the struggle. And so even some of the people who, you know, I'd like to say are, they're good people, they mean well. Um, you know, they try to like fight for the little guys, um, but they just, uh, you know, they don't, they're, they're, they're not living it. And they don't have, um, they don't have people close in their lives who are living it. And as a tenants' rights organizer, you know, I have, you know, I have, uh, like, one of my kind of more radicalizing moments over the last several years was, um, you know, when I, uh, uh, there was some moment where I think it was actually when Randall gave, you know, a $180 rent increase or something um, on our three-bedroom apartment built in the 40s or whatever, that, uh, you know, it wasn't a slum, but it wasn't like $180 annual rent increase, you know?
And it had been paid four decades ago.
Yeah, and I was already paying way more than I ever thought I would pay in rent. And certainly to like live in a three-bedroom apartment, right? And I had a professional career, I was up at Lewis and Clark teaching math and, and running a, a skill center. Um, my husband at the time was a professor and we were still, you know, so, and, and neither of us come from any money at all. Um, and so, you know, this was like the, our peak, peak prosperity. And we couldn't, you know, and, and the rents were like skyrocketing and we already like weren't making it, you know? Um, because of all the other things that cost money, childcare, health insurance, blah, blah, blah. And, uh, and I was like, wow, am I, am I going to be like priced out of Portland? Cause I'd grown up, you know, my whole twenties was all about how expensive San Francisco was and New York and, and London or whatever. And these were like the cities that you could only move to if you were, um, single and, uh, you know, either had a really good hustle or, or were working on Wall Street or whatever, right? Or could share a room with 80 people and I couldn't because I've been a single mom since I was 19. But Portland was not that city, right? Portland was a city that you could still, you know, it just, it just wasn't in that mythical, you know, that, that lore of expensive cities. So I was like, wow, am I going to be, am I going to be priced out? And then I looked at how much privilege I have, right? Like, I'm well-educated, I have a professional career, I'm married, I'm healthy, I'm white, I'm able-bodied. Um, and I thought, wow, like, and like I said, peak, peak prosperity. Um, and I thought, if I'm, if I'm feeling this way.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, how's any, you know, how's anybody else making it? And, um, I forget where I think I feel like I went off on a, I lost my train of thought on that. But that was a radicalizing moment for me.
No, that's, yeah. Why you ended up running for office?
Yeah, it was part of it, you know, it was kind of like, what's, like, what's happening here, you know? And, uh, things are really, things are really broken and, um, and nobody's talking about it because nobody's having that experience. And I think the fact that we, I mean, for the exact same reason that we're not calling for, uh, you know, that, that our city council isn't just enacting rent control right now. Um, or, you know, and banging on the governor's door to, to, uh, you know, freeze rent increases is the same thing. It's just, it's just total out of touch. It's like, we, you know, it, it, we can, in our imagination, in our imagination, renters can do it.
Well, are we demanding it? I mean, what, when you, when I have been, as you know, I've been to many Portland Tenants United rallies and, and other uh, attempts at rallies in Salem and Portland, and, and we never have more than a hundred people at these rallies. And that is not, uh, that is not a, uh, reflection, uh, actually of, of the really excellent organizing that you and a number of other people in PTU have done. I mean, with the amount of door knocking and the amount of work you guys have done in terms of communicating with local people. If, you know, there, there should be many, many more times people at those, as many people at those protests. And I, you know, I, I think I already know the answer to this question, but I want to know what you think. Why, why do so few people come out? What, do they really just think that there's no potential possibility of, of, of winning? Because there's no other cities where they're winning and so why would we win here?
Well, I think there's a lot of reasons. I mean, first of all, uh, getting turnout to Salem is just hard. Um, but, uh, but yeah, I mean, why aren't people coming out? I think that it's, um, you know, I think that there definitely is, for, for people who we haven't been able to like get to yet, they absolutely feel like there's no point, like this is just the way it is and this is the way it's always been. I mean, I remember, um, uh, somebody asking me a few years ago, um, I was getting prof- professional portraits taken for my job. And we were chit-chatting and I mentioned, you know, the rent or whatever. And he was like, you're a renter? And I said, yeah. And at this point, I'm like, you know, 37 and again, um, teaching up at a private college and blah, blah, blah. And he goes, what happened? And I was like, what do you mean? It was like I failed at adulting. Um, and, and there's this real internalization that whatever is happening to you as a renter is because you have failed to live the life that, um, we've all been, you know, told is, uh, is available to us if we just work hard. Um, and we've made bad choices and that's why we don't own houses. And so we deserve what is coming to us and this is, this just is the relationship. I mean, I know that I didn't know how, I didn't know change was possible five, six years ago. I mean, or I certainly didn't know how to do it and I didn't know, you know, what the barriers were. Um, and I, and I definitely assumed that other people were working on it, you know, that I like, and I think there's a little bit of that is that, um, you know, my generation, um, had kind of came of age, our generation came of age during the, you know, organizing wilderness, right? Like the, the Reagan and Bush years, I mean, there's, there's been some anti-war, you know, and WTO protests and stuff like that. But, um, but we didn't, I didn't grow up, you know, in the sixties when, um, you know, change was happening all the time. And so we just don't, and then, and then the nonprofit industrial, you know, complex came in and said, here, we'll provide like a tiny bit of palliative care and a tiny bit of, you know, lobbying. And we'll ask for, you know, we need this, sorry, I'm trying to stay in the window, we need this, we'll ask for this, we'll be grateful for this. Um, and there's this whole like, well, it's just somebody else's job to be an activist. You know, people will tell me, I'm glad you're an activist. And I'm like, it's not a hobby, it's a responsibility, you know?
Yeah.
We all need to be doing it and we just don't, you know, there's, there's apathy, there's apathy and alienation, a feeling that it just won't work. It can't work, somebody else is doing it, you know, the nonprofits. Um, and then also just, you know, the, the, we're crushed by capitalism, you know? I mean, the people who, who are, you know, need this the most are
They're working two jobs.
They're working two jobs, they've got kids, they've got sick kids, they're sick themselves, they're disabled. Um, you know, there's just, there's so many barriers. And so, you know, for every protest, for every city council meeting, for every Salem trip, I'll have, you know, for every one person I get there, I'll have 10 more say, I wish I could, but, you know, um, and, and it's hard, like I, for me as an organizer, I want to be like, well, of course, we all do what we can when we can. And far be it from me to tell you that you, you know, need to take your ti- time off work to, you know, to, and forego pay to come out and shout in the streets, you know, when we're not sure when or if something's going to happen. Um, on the other hand, I want to be like, look, we're not, you know, we, if, if
If we don't do it, then nothing's going to happen.
We're not going to win, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
They're not just going to give it to me if I ask nicely, right?
Yeah.
And that's what makes it, you know, and then I feel like if we, you know, if we didn't have the social distancing, um, I think we'd just be, you know, uh, uh, burning down the castle right now or, um, storming the castle, that's the word.
Yeah, yeah, you burn it down after you storm it, yeah.
Yeah, and so it's really, it's hard to like get us, you know, just having to do everything online. I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to say it can't be done, but it does really
Very difficult, how is that going?
It really, yeah, it's kind of like just fit, you know, the effervescence of like getting all these people together to be like, yeah, we need this. It's just, it's really hard to do.
But I think that there are probably, I, I don't know, I haven't like, you know, tried to look it up or anything, but I would guess that the, the term rent strike is being searched on Google more than ever since Google's existed. And I imagine that this probably is resulting in some people finding about your campaign and finding out about Portland Tenants United and is, is that happening too?
Yep, 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 yeah, we've gotten new, we've gotten a lot more members, um, and definitely a lot more interest. We're also getting, um, you know, the, the Facebook group has, the Facebook page, um, has become kind of, you know, a 911 for renters. Um, I mean, and there's just, oh, there's just so many, so many evil landlords out there, um, doing so many evil things. And it's been really hard because I feel like we're under a triage tent where we want, you know, we want to like ready for battle um, and storm the castle, but we're under a tria-, you know, but there's all these people with like, you know, bleeding out.
Yeah, yeah, too busy trying to pass people up.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um, and it's been, it's been really hard. Um, and the left is just, I don't, you know, in Portland, the left is kind of less united and organized than ever.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and there's, you know, it, it feels so incredibly, um, you know, it felt like just needlessly frustrating and silly before coronavirus, but now I'm like, are you kidding? Are you like still fighting these faction fights? Like, do you see what's happening right now?
Yeah. No, even, even Google and Apple are communicating.
You know?
Yeah, exactly, this is it, yeah, this is it. And now, yeah, and you can't, and, and don't be, don't be complaining about, uh, yeah, faction stuff or
Like, can you just like hold your nose and work together? Like, we really
Yeah.
Like, we really do actually want the same things, you know?
If, if it's anything like past, uh, moments of, when, when there's suddenly, uh, the possibility for a lot of good organizing to take place, then there's, uh, there's inevitably going to be people saying like, well, why didn't they join PTU before? You know, like, or, you know, whatever, that's the kind of stuff people will say.
PTU's not saying that, it's a, but then there's, you know, there's a, there's like, uh, literally a single individual who started the PDX rent strike. And, um, I don't even know what her gripe is with me, but it is. And so, um, you know, so here I am, running for office, the head of PTU. PTU has done, you know, the most militant and effective tenants' rights organizing, um, you know, in recent history on the, you know, in, in Oregon, certainly, if not the whole West Coast. And, uh, and she's And, uh, and she's holding, you know, and she's trying to convene a whole new effort where, and it's fine, like I'm all for autonomous organizing, like that's great, but like really explicitly like Margot Black and PTU aren't allowed. And it's like,
Bizarre.
It's not like Margot Black or PTU need to be in charge, but it's like, really like this is the most important value to you right now?
That's so bizarre. Well, I mean, I would be surprised if they had heard of Margot Black or PTU because otherwise they might actually just join, uh, with PTU. I, because the rent strike, uh, initiative that's happening all over the country and all, and many other countries, it's like, it's a, it's a very, it's a meme. It's a, it's a concept. It's wonderful that it's catching on. It's an, it's an initiative that's not related to previous tenant organizing in many cases, but
No, no, I agree.
One would hope that it'll just, uh, naturally hook in with, with real tenant organizing that's going on. But in moments like these, what tends to happen in, in, uh, historically with, with like big crises is the people who had been doing a lot of the organizing, who had their ideas of what were realistic parameters for organizing before the crisis are the ones who don't, uh, catch up to the current situation as fast as just regular people do. The regular people, they got their, their feet on the ground and, and they know when it's time for, you know, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And that, you know, and that's something I'm kind of, you know, that's what's so exciting about all the autonomous organizing happening. It's like, you don't even need the, you know, the institutions necessarily because the people are just gonna do it, you know, when the, when the match is thrown on the, uh, fire, but
Then they'll need organization though. At, at that point, they need organization. Yeah.
I think what I'd like to see, I think the most effective way to do this, if I might think out loud for just a second, is that we really, like you're in Randall and they have a few buildings and, and you know, it's like Randall and Randall Children's Hospital, right?
Well, Randall, so their Mr. And Mrs. Randall in 2011 donated $10 million to the, uh, Emmanuel Children's Hospital, which then, uh, changed its name to Randall Children's Hospital because of that donation. And yeah, it is just like, uh, so they spent $10 million on that. Uh, and, and that's lovely. I'm all for donating money to hospitals. But, you know, I think everybody, it, it needs to understand where that money came from. That money came from evicting children from their houses. Yeah.
And it came, yeah, and it came from like fleecing me for,
Yeah, kicking you and your kids out of your house, raising the rent impossibly to the point where you can't pay it and doing it to lots of other people. And they only stopped doing it over 10% raises when it was, it became illegal to do that.
Oh, I was living in Randall when, when Rilo passed and they had already, so I was in the middle of my lease. So I didn't get, I wasn't getting a rent increase, but one of my neighbors, um, like seven doors down had gotten her rent increase letter and it had, you know, they had a different price for every like month long lease that you sign, but the, uh, you know, they want a time when your lease turns over. So they don't have turnover at bad times. So like certain leases were cheaper than, and, and like month to month was like a $700 increase or something like that. Uh, and, and then Rilo passed. And, and remember it passed and it was retroactive, um, for any notice that had already been issued. And, um, Randall, like the day after Rilo passed, she got a new letter on her door that, um, not only said disregard the previous notice, but said it, it had all the same lease terms and she could pick whichever one she wanted and none of, for zero rent increase for any of them. Like they just zeroed everything out in response and it was so beautiful. And I mean, of course they didn't, you know, stick with that. My next rent increase was considerably smaller. It was like $40. Um, so I feel like they, they got the picture, but, uh, but yeah, they were, you know, I mean, $700 to go month to month, um, which some people need, you know, for flexibility. Uh, but I, so I'd like to see, like Randall's a good one and there's, there's some other ones, especially, you know, there've been a few that have, uh, Palisades Property Management is one where there, the tenants are really, are doing some property management based organizing and I'm really excited. That might like pop really soon. Star Metro, both Palisades and Star Metro, they both sent out letters saying, um, use a credit card, get a job at Fredway, at Fredway, Fred Meyers or Safeway or Amazon. Um, and, and so that really pissed their tenants off. I think we need to organize underneath these corporate owners and property managers so that we, um, and really focus the rent strike on them, uh, because they have the money, right? They have $10 million to go put their name on a hospital, um, and everything else. And, you know, it's the, it's the small mom and pops who, when you call for the huge rent strike, um, you know, they, and, and it's not just, it's not just the rent strike. It's every tenant protection that we ever fight for. You know, mom and pops come out and make it look like we're, you know, stealing their children in the night.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, some of those small mom and pops really aren't a whole lot different than us, some of them, right?
Some of them.
Yeah. Then you have the people who introduce themselves as like, I'm a small mom and pop. I only own 10 buildings.
Yeah, right.
That's a lot more than my mom and pop own.
You're, you're in the top, you're in the point one percent. I mean, this is what people need to understand. When we talk about the one percent, the 99%, the, the, the divisions, anybody who owns 10 buildings is in the point one percent of the richest people in the United States. So there are people who own trailer parks in Wisconsin who are, uh, because they own the trailer park and charge everybody $400 a month to live in that trailer, uh, they make more money than 99.9% of Americans. But, um, so we just got a few minutes here, but I just, I just, I know we got votemargo.com right there on the, on the screen. But people can go to the website and one of the things that, that's really cool about the current moment, uh, well, I mean, not, not cool, but, but in terms of organizing on the internet, uh, there is this app called Reach, which I, having been to a couple of your campaign, uh, meetings, there's, uh, this app that people can do a lot of organizing online, uh, by contacting people, getting them registered to vote and getting them involved with the campaign. And people need to go to votemargo.com and find out about that. And anybody in the United States, if you're a citizen or a permanent resident, you don't need to be an Oregon or a Portland resident. You can donate to Margot's campaign and, um, and you can find out about how to do that at votemargo.com.
Please donate to Margot's campaign. Um, the, the, I don't take any, um, donations over $250 and I only take donations from humans. So no, um, no businesses, no entities, no non-humans at all. Um, and, uh, I only have, so ballots go out, uh, oh my gosh. Ballots go out, um, on April 28th or April 29th. My last day to fundraise is April 28th, which is in what, 10 days? What's today? Oh, 10 days. Um, and, uh, I, you know, we've, we've, we've done some good fundraising and we've run a really solid campaign and, and in Portland, um, we're really lucky to have public financing, um, you know, that does some matching of donations, which is awesome. But, uh, the ruling class absolutely does not want me to win. Um, that has become more and more clear over the last few days. The, um, the, the money is desperately needed for advertising and pushing my name out there to as many people as possible. In Portland, we have, we have 18 people running for this seat. Um, I'm definitely in, uh, the top, uh, four or five, um, who have a chance of going on to the runoff, um, which will be special in, in a special election in August. But just, just so folks understand the way that, um, you know, we like to talk about hating our two party system. Um, and I agree, but when we vote by plurality, and by that I mean, you get a ballot with 18 people on it and you just pick one, the way the math shakes out is it is possible, theoretically possible for the top two people to have only 7% of the vote. Um, you know, if, if everything works and, and they, them to go on to the general election. And what that, and those top two, they could be two like Trumpers, right? Who just did real good organizing in their like religious right wing community.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, and, and they, so they could be the least preferred candidates of the other 85% of the election, uh, electorate. And then end up, you know, holding the seat. The difference between, you know, second and third place, it's between going on and not going on could, could be just a few votes. I mean, um, with 18 candidates and five, you know, who have some level of, uh, well, five to eight have some level of name recognition and some organizing. Um, you know, I have a really strong base and I have a strong message, um, but it is a base that is, um, typically disenfranchised, you know, they're under registered, um, they, you know, they aren't as typically engaged because they have been trained to believe that, um, this, you know, there's no point, uh, that, you know, politicians don't, you know, knock on their doors or speak for them or care about them or any, or ever, ever do anything that doesn't screw them. Um, and so I have to reach these people. I have to, um, get them registered to vote. The last day to register to vote is in 10 days. Um, and really because we can't knock doors, because we can't hold events, um, I, I have to just advertise, 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 which unfortunately costs money. Um, and we, uh, I have, right now I have the most donors of anybody in my race. Okay? That's, that's, that's exciting. But the least amount of money, by like 10 to $30,000 less than the, the two people closest to me in donors. Because I said I take donations up to $250, but most of my donations are $5, $5 to $20. Um, because, you know, the people who are donating to me are,
People paying 90% of their income on rent already. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and that's, I love that. I mean, I love that my campaign really truly is being funded by $5 donors. Um, I just need more of them.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, because, you know, I, because we have to, you know, it, it just costs money to get the message out there. Um, I got interviewed by the Portland Tribune this week, uh, for an endorsement interview and I was very flattered because I was one of five that they picked. And the Tribune is, uh, they're a little, they're a little more conservative and libertarian leaning. And so I was like, wow, I feel like dignified, like I'm, like the fact that they dignified my candidacy by inviting me is kind of a thing.
Yeah.
Um, and I, and I, when they said like, what are you going to do about the necessary budget shortfalls? You know, what, what are you going to cut? And I was like, we're not cutting any public services. We're going to tax the rich, you know? We're all, we're all on board with not hoarding toilet paper and not hoarding face masks. Let's stop hoarding money. Stop hoarding empty houses. And, and they, so they just put out their endorsements and one of my opponents, so when, when they said, why are you running? He said, well, after Commissioner Fish died, um, you know, I've got 20 years of, uh, of, or, uh, 20 years of experience making, you know, rich people really happy. He didn't say that, but, um, he has lots of nonprofit, uh, experience. And he said, and when Fish died, you know, a lot of people came knocking on my doors saying, the last grown up left the room. You've got to run. And I said, are you kidding? You know, those, uh, those children are first of all, women, you know, like he's talking about the other, you know, there's three women and the mayor on council, you know, and they're, and they're radical women who are now being, you know, infantilized.
Yeah.
Um, and I, and I kind of, you know, I clapped back during my closing statement. Anyway, they released their endorsement. They endorsed that dude who in response to my tax the rich, he was like, we don't need to do class war right now. I mean, we're all in this together.
Oh yeah, right. No, we're losing the class war. That's why they don't care about the class war. Yeah.
And what was remarkable is in, you know, this particular, you know, Portland Tribune, normally they will talk about everybody they did interview. And they'll be like, these are all competent and anybody would be a good choice, but this is our top choice. Or this is why we didn't pick them. They're just not quite strong enough in these categories or whatever. They didn't even mention that they interviewed me.
Wow. Yeah. Yeah. That's, that's, that tells us what we're up against. Yeah.
They didn't even like, they could have been like, we interviewed her, but she's a crazy radical. Don't vote for Margot Black. But they didn't even want to dignify my campaign that much because they know that I'm a threat.
They know and they don't even want to mention your name. Cause if they mention your name and anything about what your campaign, then they're giving you the kind of publicity that you need.
Exactly.
And the fact is that your name actually, you have more name recognition than most of these candidates because of your history as an activist. So the, the best thing they can do to, to avoid, uh, promoting your campaign is not to mention you. Cause, cause you know, that if they mention you, it's good, it's going to be good publicity, no matter what they say about you. Cause they're going to say, oh, she's a class warrior and that's supposed to be negative. But you know, when Obama was running against, uh, when was it, you know, he was, what was it? McCain or something? Every time they kicked, they called Obama a socialist. His campaign ra- his ratings went up. So they had to, you know, it's like, the insults weren't working. But Margot, thank you so much for coming on my little live stream show and, um, we'll, we'll, I'll do all the publicity I can for your campaign from here in my little living room. But, um, yes, thanks so much.
Want to get involved, uh, especially get on the Reach app. We have to give you a special invitation to get into our campaign. So message the Facebook page, um, and, uh, or you can email myself, margot@votemargot.com or outreach@votemargot.com. Um, uh, and, uh, we'll get you hooked in and, um, it's just, it's relational organizing. You just, you just get in and then you start talking to literally the people you already know in the app about me as a candidate. And it's, it's what Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez used for her surprise upset victory. So if we do it, we can win. But, um, we have to do it. You know, I do have name recognition and I do have a base, but there are really powerful, well financed people who really, um, want to prevent me from winning and ideally to, you know, they want, they, their hope is that they can see, I get very few votes. And so they're going to turn out communities that will definitely vote against me, um, to try to depress my vote to show that I, you know, that, that this is not, this is no, no time for socialism and class war, you know? They, you know, they also, they endorsed Ted Wheeler saying, we might've given other candidates a look, but COVID-19, you know, we need a, we need a steady hand. And so he's, he's going to get the like wartime president, um, you know, sort of treatment. And I, you know, we're talking about unprecedented times right now. We need unprecedented solutions. We need unprecedented voices. We need unprecedented leaders. This is not the time to bring all the same people back to the table who've been at the table, um, building systems and defending the systems that are, um, crushing us right now, you know? This is, this is not the time for the same steady hands who literally created this crisis. It's time for the people who've been talking about the problems that this crisis is exposing and what take, you know, what it takes to fix them, real time, real, you know, real, real world, uh, before COVID, you know, came in and, and, uh, made all of these crises trickle up.
Yeah. Made everything more extreme. Yeah. Excellent. Go to votemargo.com, vote for Margot, send money and sign up to help in the campaign. And, uh, you don't even need to be from Portland. But if you are, that's good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
We'll talk to you soon. Thank you.
Talk to you soon. Bye bye.
Bye bye. Thank you all for joining me in this discussion with Portland Tenants United founder and Portland City Council candidate, Margot Black. Please support her campaign financially. If you're a US citizen or a permanent resident, it doesn't matter what state you live in. Go to votemargo.com, right there on the screen if you're watching and not listening in the podcast version later. But if you are, then you heard her pronounce her name, uh, wrongly. So you can spell it, V O T E M I, M A R G O T, Margot with a T at the end. Okay? Votemargo.com. I, I will be doing live stream broadcasts every weekday of next week. On Monday, I'll be doing a webinar on methods of survival for indie musicians in times of pandemic. On Tuesday, I'll be interviewing another one of my favorite songwriters, Seattle's Jim Page. If you want to check out previous interviews I've done, they're all up on my YouTube channel in the Discussions with David playlist. If you want to support my work, please go to davidrovix.com/subscribe or, uh, patreon.com/davidrovix. And remember votemargo.com. Hope to see you again soon here in the matrix and sometime in the not too distant future, again, in the streets.